I'd like to call this meeting of the Wilmer City Council to order at 6:02. We will now move on to the work session. This portion of the meeting is for discussion only. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, no formal action or vote will be taken and on an item during the work session. Ms. Downs?
Item number one is discuss and receive a presentation on Public Works Department operations. Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of council, Member Tam initiated this request for a work session in order to talk through issues, maintenance, and right-of-way as well as signed matters. And so, we've divided this up into a conversation to start for the benefit of our new council member, but also to kind of walk through all of the issues that were requested, one of which would be services that Dallas County provides as part of our public works infrastructure. And so, we will begin the discussion with a global infrastructure overview that will be led by the Honorable Commissioner Price of District 3.
That's okay. Most mics don't like me, that's okay. First of all, Madam Mayor, Member of the Council, Madam Manager, Mr. Attorney, members of the city of Wilmer. I've had some copies made with regards to kind of where Wilmer has come from. And first of all, let me just congratulate you. I tell people all the time, Dallas County is 985 square miles, 31 cities in Dallas County, 16 of them are in my district. I have 70% of Dallas County. And I began at the Tarrant County line, I followed the Ellis County line to Kaufman County, and then I take Kaufman County north all the way to Denton County. And so, when you look proportionately of the 2.8 million people that are in Dallas County, I don't have any more than my other colleagues, but I have more area. And so, when you look at what's going on, the growth spur and development is primarily south of I-30. And so, I come this evening just to talk to you about kind of where Wilmer has evolved. And most of you know already probably know this, there's been a number of projects on the ground, and then there are a number of projects that are in the queue, not one of which, Madam Manager, is the hockey stick of about $87 million. This is a product that I've given that you can take with you. But I want to thank a number of individuals that have made sure that Wilmer has prospered. I said when I drew Wilmer into my district, y'all were probably doing about $8 million today, you're about $230 million. I know you've seen your latest tax rolls, as we all have, you're looking for that to be certified rolls as you begin to move forward. And so, if you'll go to the presentation, it talks about the Dallas County inland port, you know, and the unique qualities. Five cities make up this inland port. You've got, it's been individually developer-driven, there's no port authority, a overreaching strategic team, and what is known as the inland port, for those of you who are new, is 120 square miles that define what is known as the inland port. Given that, the third page there is the inland port planning in the inland port. When I took on not only Wilmer, but this whole Wilmer, the Hutchins, the Lancaster's of the world, what had happened is, is that most of what we call the thoroughfare programs had not been mapped. And so, when you look at the initial Dallas County planning in the inland port in 2012, and remember, I redrew it in 2010, the North Central Texas Council of Government took some money, and they, along with Dallas County, did what is called an infrastructure program. It is, it's the first one that had been done in decades. And so, when you see this report, the final report, and of course, it's out online, it begins to talk about how we began to develop Wilmer. For those of you who lived in Wilmer all your life, you understand that at one time, you were on a pass-through program. You were doing water, or what we call out of the wells, you were buying water from Hutchins. You were paying a premium on your water that you were buying from Hutchins. And oftentimes, I'd get calls, your water utility bills was probably as much as any bill that you had in the city of Wilmer. But after a few years of negotiation and being able to persuade Dallas Water Utility that Lancaster, who buys about 40 million gallons of water a day, was able to sell some water to Wilmer, and all I needed was 3 million gallons. Finally, after about a year and a half, two years, we secured that agreement. But the issue was, is that Wilmer did not have the infrastructure to sustain it, to be able to receive the water. It made no difference that I could get 3 million gallons from Lancaster, you couldn't receive it. And so, in 2008, I convinced the legislature to allow me to do infrastructure in a thoroughfare program. And so, what we did is, when we built Pleasant Run, we built in a water system that would service the city of Wilmer. We built a 2 million gallon underground storage tank, we built a 500 gallon above-ground storage tank, and we built a pump station. And so, as you continue to look here with this inland port, and that, one of the things we did after 2012 with the North Central Texas Council of Government is, is that there was a group out of Louisiana called Plaque Mines, and they wanted to come in here and arrange an agreement, a memorandum of understanding with the Dallas County inland ports. As such, we needed to update our South Dallas County infrastructure assessment. So, in 2020, we came back and we updated the infrastructure program. The next one is the one I just talked about here with Pleasant Run, the water line, and the Pinto Road pump station. It shows how much money, well, we'd spent, we spent $2.5 million on water line improvements, we spent another $6.31 million on the pump station, and the total construction there was about $8.81 million. Dallas County, in addition to the whole project, we put in about $12 million, almost $13 million in the project. Wilmer's got a project reimbursement of $3.69 million. So then, we went in a major capital improvement, 3143 and 3144, which was Phase 2 of Pleasant Run. And when we did that, that total construction cost in Phase 2 was 18.69 million. Dallas County, again, contributed 7.3 million. RTR, which is the regional transportation, put in 15 million in Phase 2. And then, we went into Phase 3, which was part of the Hiking Bag Trail, which was constructed. All in all, the total construction cost of $2.5 million, $2.5 million, came out of Phase 3, and that was with a hiking bag trail. Dallas County only contributed to that about 740,000. The total construction for Phase 2 and 3 of Pleasant Run Road and the trail was $2.36 million. Dallas County led these projects, and as such, we created a four-lane undivided concrete section that was constructed. The total cost of that project was $5.7 million. And then, we added another cost of $7.9 million. Wilmer contributed about $860,000. And then, of course, Lancaster did about another $590,000. And so, I'm bringing all this together, coming up to the project that is going to be before you today, that we are, we're looking at, this inland port loop, better known as the hockey sticks project. This is a project totaled, and I won't go into all details, you can read this in your leisure, and you'll see that at the end of the day, we're going to be talking about $87 million that's coming into this area. The hockey stick has been proposed for years because of the South Dallas County inland port multimodal connectivity project. And of course, it breaks it down into what we're going to spend on everything from Beltline and each phase. So, it'll give you that, so that you'll, like I say, in your leisure, you'll have a chance to mark it out. The first phase, 1, in Beltline to Sunrise Road, which is south of Beltline, 1.8 miles, that's $23,600,000. The total phase on 1B, Sunrise Road, and what they're called the side path, that's from Pleasant Run to Beltline, that's 1.1 mile, that's another $2 million. And then, the city of Wilmer, in terms of your truck ordinance and pedestrian safety elements that you want to plug into the project, or the CAG made sure that we put in the project, is about 3/4 of a million dollars, $725,000. Phase 2A, again, south of Beltline, along Sunrise Road to Ferris, is $11,700,000, it's about a mile long. And then, we go into Phase 2B, from Ferris Road, south of Van Road to Loop 9, which is about 16,000, another half a mile. And the total cost was that, it's $37,409. All in all, again, Phase 3 is $11,450,000, or $87 million. This project is on a fast track, and we are now, this has become our priority project at Dallas County, to make sure we get this. Wilmer is growing in ways that you can't still even imagine. And when we look at how Wilmer's growth pattern is, we understand the needs, not only for infrastructure, but for the opportunity to try to encourage them. I know that some of you have been part of this new listening session that we have engaged. I've said to the prior councils that Wilmer needs a medical facility. When I look at Wilmer, when I look at Hutchins, when I look at this area, there is really no medical facility that is in this area that can not only service your citizenry, but also the inland port area. Parkland, I have made that a priority. We're in the process of doing what we call extending our COPC, that's Community Oriented Primary Care Clinics. And the next ones that were capitalized and slated for this year were Lancaster and one in foreign north Dallas. Well, as you know, I've approached Parkland and said that my priority would be Wilmer, and to be able to go into the interstate 45 area, and that would service not only Wilmer, but Hutchins and the inland port area. The other day, you guys did a listening session with regards to that project, and June the 11th, virtually, you will be able to chime in as to whether or not, virtually, whether or not you think this is in the best interest of Wilmer. I definitely think it's just needed, when you look at all your studies, a medical facility is almost a necessary part of that footprint. Again, the new council people, we'll get you a copy of this, but the Dallas County Inland Port Flood Protection Planning Study Update, I presented to this council, as to all of my councils, with regards to this. We approached the Texas Water Development Board with a project, and as such, was awarded the project, and Dallas County spent about $7 million. Your tributaries in the southern sector had not been mapped in probably the last 40 years or four decades. That's not only you, that's Duncanville, that's Lancaster, that's Hutchins, all of the tributaries had not been mapped. And so, in order to deal with this whole issue of flooding and water management, we took on this planning study update. You have it there before, primarily, we used, again, the inland port as the basis for how we were going to take and drive this Texas Water Development Board application. We have now concluded this. We've done this for the last two, almost three years, nine projects have been identified, and we drafted that in late January, comments are received by March. We have now, our consultant is addressing the comments, and we are, we have made a submission to the Texas Water Development Board. If you'll, if you'll look at that Dallas County inland port flood planning study, I know it's difficult to believe, but these are roadways that are in my district that have just completely decayed as a result of water and the peril that it brings with it. It's hard to really imagine that unless you've been in the middle of it. But anyway, the project schedule shows you the major milestones, all the meetings I've had with all of the various councils, and the projects that we have submitted. You've heard a lot about Loop 9 and Segment B from Interstate 35E to Interstate 45. This project is a six-lane frontage road, 11.4 miles. By the way, we've opened that project, across the river, we've opened that project, and so, my next phase of this project will go on 67. It is definitely being utilized, we're trying to figure out how to manage it now. Wilmer, again, the data district. You've been very progressive, as you talk about moving forward with the data district. It's currently under construction. I saw the signs as I came into Wilmer today, it said Mason Road was closed, we had to close it by court order so that they could get some of the construction moving forward. You've got two projects, you've got 470,000 square feet with about $300 million, you've got another second one at 560,000 square feet, for the total of about $350 million. Ladies and gentlemen, you'll understand that when you look at commercially what's going on, that begins to take and build your tax base here in Wilmer. That's the reason your growth rate has outpaced the county in percentages. The next one is the Dallas County inland port meetings that we've had, and that's what IP TMA is, Inland Port Transportation Manual Authority, on the North Central Texas Council of Government. These are meetings that we have, and I want to commend Wilmer, because you always seem to be involved in all of our meetings. I call those meetings primarily, as I just said, of 31 cities in Dallas County, 16 of them in my district. And I need the east side of my district to know what's going on on the west side and vice versa. We're watching the growth, the development coming in, but it's got to be managed, and if we don't manage it, we're all going to be in some peril. I wrote challenges with opening Loop 9, and continued, I wrote a letter to Mayor Peta back in March, and talked about the challenges of opening this road. However, we've done that, and we are, we're going to continue to move forward. Wilmer has been a good partner, and we have what is called discretionary at Dallas County. With regards to my urge in Parkland to talk about a clinic, I have proposed, and I've said something to Madam Manager with regards to a million dollars. Now, each one of the commissioners get a discretionary fund, and they can award those dollars to whomever meets the criteria who talks about growth. And what I told Madam Manager with regards to what is going on on 45, that I really wanted to see Wilmer continue down that road. And so, there are a number of my cities that wanted to know why Wilmer was the beneficiary of that offer of a million dollars, just because I see the growth spur and what's going on on 45. I'm in constant collaboration with TechDoc, for Parkland to do what they need to do over on 45, we need an access ramp, easy off, easy off. And while I have no guarantees from TechDoc, I am working with the District Director, Ms. Clemson, to talk about putting that project there. Once we, I think, once we anchor Parkland in the area, I think that that will be, that will open up a whole new era in terms of Wilmer and how you proceed to go forward. So, I just wanted you to have something, I know you don't really need any bedtime material, but it does help. This is the one that Parkland wants to hear from you, I don't know if you distributed, got it in Spanish and English, your voice matters, this is your, this is part of the June 11 virtual, and I hope you will distribute it to your constituents, and they will, in fact, take heed, and let us, let us hear from them in terms of access to medical facility. It's just an imperative. I want to thank Laura Freeland, who is Dallas County Inland Port Director, and all that you guys continue to do to make Wilmer be as progressive as it is. I'll be glad to answer any questions about projects and future projects with regards to Wilmer. There's only a finite amount of money, and I don't know, Mr. Attorney, I don't know in your briefing session, if you're able to collaborate back and forth. But all I'm telling you is, is that Wilmer is a bright star, you know, on the horizon, and I appreciate the opportunity to represent and work with you. Yes, ma'am? Counselor?
Probably changing the subject.
Sure.
Is there any plans, I was there when Pleasant Run overpassed, we dedicated that?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said then, Beltline will be next, is there anything in the making for that overpass? We have so much traffic with all these buildings on Beltline, it's 45.
I think the, at least right now, with this, the priority is the hockey stick, and I think that's about diversion. There is no plans, other than what you see in here.
Right here in front of us.
Yes, Sunrise on that area, the north and south of Beltline. But one of the things we're trying to do, and when you, when you read the hockey stick, and believe it, all of our forces now are concentrating on that, on that hockey stick.
Yeah.
That hockey stick is going to be the different, it's going to be as much of a difference-maker as Loop 9 is in this whole southern carter. And again, Wilmer, like I said, I spent 38 million on Pleasant Run, and then, when we thought we were going to be the beneficiary, I think that was before, most of you, even Ms. Strainfellow was here, we thought we were going to be the beneficiary of a manufacturing candy store, we were not successful, they used us and basically decided to stay in South Carolina. But we had already built Sunrise from Beltline to Pleasant Run. And so, you know, the best laid plans, I mean, we, you know, we call ourselves planning that's finite dollars, but when I look proportionally at the money that is in my district, believe me, Wilmer, given your population and all, you get more than your fair share, and primarily because you're in proximity to that inland port. Again, another reason I'm pushing for the Community Oriented Primary Care Clinic for Parkland. Now, we've got some FQHCs, some federally qualified health centers that are making applications, but they're making applications in Lancaster, they're making applications in De Soto, nobody's making applications for Wilmer or Hutchins. And so, the footprint is really on Wilmer, and of course, Hutchins is just right up the road. Yes, ma'am? Counselor?
So, thank you for all the information you've given us. I really have a comment rather than a question.
Okay.
Because I think you just answered my question. But you've described Wilmer as a bright star on the horizon, and you've highlighted the growth that we have experienced in the past couple of, well, several years.
Yes, ma'am.
I just cannot, in my wildest imagination, imagine why there's not been any attention to Beltline Road between 35 and 175. I travel that every day to work and back, and there is an enormous amount of traffic, and the road is so deteriorated. And every once in a while, we get a little patch, but that doesn't take care of the problem. And I think I asked you that same thing when you were here the last time.
You did.
And I just cannot understand why we can't have some attention to the major thoroughfare through our city if we're such a bright star on the horizon.
Well, I think, you know, when you start talking about going through cities, I mean, it's no different than any of my other cities, you don't, would... You don't, I think the growth spur unfortunately is around it. And, you know, again, you know, when I inherited you guys in, you know, twenty, right before twenty-ten, I mean, your businesses, you were already there, and I did planning, but Beltline in terms of being a real traffic corridor, because it's state up until it gets to your city limits. And then it's, you know, you guys, I guess, took it in. And I've said something to Ms., to Susan, last time I was here, and you said something. I called Ms. Clemmons and said something to her, and she said that is a city street. And so, again, and in a patching, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure you guys, you know, must be doing it, because, again, it's a city street. And I'm pretty much prohibited in terms of doing overlays, reconstructions, you know, on city streets. We have streets that are Class A, Class B, and Class A is unincorporated. That means I'm totally responsible. I've got a hundred and nine miles. That means nobody else is, I've got to do it. All the rest of my colleagues together have less than one mile, have a hundred and nine miles. So that's what my road and bridge people do every day. Class B roads is where we enter into an arrangement wherein you, if it's on the thoroughfare plan, you provide the material and I provide the labor, because all of the heavy equipment. I mean, I don't expect Wilmer to go and spend ten million dollars on heavy equipment. You don't have enough road to maintain them, but I do. And so the agreement is, is that you provide the material and with the, in local agreement, ILA, and then I can come in and do the road. But, you know, that's, I mean, that's on you, but it's got to be a Class B road. Then, of course, there's Class C road. So we have, and I don't mind generating that to all of you since you're new, as to what all of that entails. But city streets, I'm not, I get the same thing from Dallas, believe me. You know, people say, well, why aren't you over here unstopping this drain? I can't. That's in the city of Dallas. I don't get a chance to do that. I am primarily unincorporated unless you fall within that plan. That's your street, so that's it. But all around you, got to remember, you know, between cog and regional transportation, that's the reason you're seeing that development, those streets. It's taken me forever on Sunrise Road, because you got part of it, Lancaster's got part of it, and it's been a real nightmare, but you got those data centers going in there. And I'm just now, even after I did Sunrise to the north, going to Pleasant Run, remember, that's my cross street, my north-south thoroughfare, because trucks can't come down Beltline Road. So I need that, but I'm just now being able to do the southern part of Sunrise Road. And Loop Nine, like I said, I'm open. So it's a lot of policy decisions, and if it's in the city, you know, that's on you guys. Yes, ma'am. But I hope you will pursue this, and if you have questions, you know, you're welcome to reach out to my office. I mean, we're having challenges like everybody else in terms of funding. Major capital improvement projects are projects that we put across. You know, Dallas County, it was a pay-as-you-go county, but that basically means all of y'all live in Dallas County. You haven't voted on a Dallas County bar since nineteen ninety-five. You haven't voted on a bar. And we have continued to spend millions of dollars because we have apportioned our tax rate based on transportation and based on facilities, okay? And so as a result, you know, we've made it worth. We've been able to leverage, we've been able to leverage six hundred million dollars to a billion three. We've done that, because we have, because we have, we have a process by which we do it. City, do you really want this project? This is the way it rates on a scale. And if it rates that way on a scale, then you put up your money. That's the reason you see here. I broke out how much money Dallas County put in it and how much you put in it. But I've spent proportionately, I guarantee you, given your population, more money in Wilmer than I have in other parts of my district, but your population is growing.
Do you think Loop Nine would have taken off better than what it has? It's still not.
Well, but you got to build it in section.
This is their route, Beltline Road.
Yeah.
And, you know, when they get off, you know, for more.
But that's, that, you know, you're not going to control traffic, you're not going to control traffic so much. But the problem is, it's, believe me, it's heavily traveled. It is heavily traveled, and that's just between forty-five and thirty-five, you know. By the time, you know, we finish it, but right now, it's heavily traveled. But truckers, truckers are going to take the path of least resistance, you know. We only got so many, I tell people all the time, Sheriff's Department has twenty-five-hundred employees, fourteen hundred and fifty of them are detention service officers. And so when you look at traffic, when you look at waits and measures, you know, she has a very small group to try to cover. I just told you, nine hundred, and I don't count what's really going on, but nine hundred and fifty-five square miles she just can't cover. And I understand under the Defunding Act, we fund her to the tune of about two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars. But the sad commentary is, is that eighteen million of it every month goes to their jail. Parkland spends another five million every month in their jail. And so, I mean, I'm just saying, we've got the same challenges, but if you look at what I've provided you, we've balanced, given your population, given your growth spur, I've balanced the money, the appropriation for Wilmer.
I understand you go through the process, and maybe eventually we'll get our Overpass, and this will take some of the traffic off, since they're not, haven't caught on to Loop Nine yet.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, I've never seen just a few cars on there. I haven't been on it myself. It looks kind of spooky.
No, we posted, no.
I love Loop Nine.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
The only issue that I have is if I'm going to go south, when you get to thirty-five, you've got, there's no crossover to thirty-five and as of yet, well, and then the construction, and you've got to go a mile and a half north to turn around to go south, and so that may be an issue, but if you're just going to Red Oak or to three forty-two or something, it's awesome.
Yeah, it is.
And I want to publicly say I appreciate all your efforts to assist our city, and I will agree about the Parkland clinic. I have been promoting that and trying to get people to do the survey and.
Thank you.
And to participate as much, and so I do appreciate all your efforts for our citizens.
Well, and I employ all of you to get your citizen, answer that survey, you know, I mean, we're no different than anybody else. I mean, Parkland doesn't want to just put a clinic out here and there's no utilization, but the need is here, and I'm going to tell you, as a result, we'll recruit in inland port areas, but the need is here in Hutchins. If we build it in Wilmer, Hutchins will come.
You might as well say we are in the, we're the center. We will get Segalville, we will get Hutchins, we will get Lancaster, they will come here. And so to me, I think that would be the wise investment for Parkland operations, to build it here in Wilmer.
I totally, and very seldom do I approach the board. I only deal with them usually during budget time, but I've gone one step further. I've approached the board, I've done the layout, I've given them all the Wilmer numbers, and I've told them about my proposed economic money that I proposed, like all the rest of my colleagues, for Wilmer. So now that's the reason you're getting your listening sessions, and so now the rest of it's up to the citizens of Wilmer, say, hey, you know, do you really want it? And as you wisely said, the rest of them, you build it in Wilmer, they'll come.
And because Ms. Roman and Ms. Downs, they, I asked them to put that on our city page. I want the citizens to listen, to fill out that survey, send it in. That's very, very important for our city. And I know that you're talking about what Parkland can do for us. If Parkland comes to Wilmer, we're going to get retail, and I mean, we will get retail, and it's what our citizens want.
It is an anchor. You're exactly right. Every place we've built, community-oriented primary care clinics, we've seen in the area, and even in the city, we've seen retail. And I think you had a study, Madam Manager, that said that the, one of the anchors was a medical facility, and so, okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, thank you, thank you for your time and attention, and Wilmer continue to grow. We're going to work with you. We've got a few challenges, and for terms of grants, Dallas County has about four-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars worth of grants that impacts about two-hundred-and-seventy-five of our employees, and most of that's on the health side. And, you know, we've already been hit for about seventy million. But the deal, Parkland is a capitalization. We plug that into the budget. That's not grant money. That's money that the citizens have invested. Parkland's about a three-and-a-half billion dollar annual appropriation, but that money is built into the capital projects, okay?
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Have a nice day.
So to continue the discussion, Wayne McCurley, our Public Works Director, is going to come up and just walk through how public works issues are addressed, how there is to, what they do for maintenance and right-ofways, and then talk about city signs as well as TechDOT.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So with Public Works, you know, there's a lot that we do. A lot of issues we have is really with our streets, in which we have a street assessment. If you remember, we had Nexco come in, kind of give us a street rating, and we're building a management program based off of that rating. Just a little bit of information, like this year, year-to-date, we've filled over seven-thousand potholes. There's a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and seventeen thousand pounds of asphalt, eighty-five tons of asphalt. And just kind of put that in perspective, so one ton of asphalt fills about ninety-five potholes, depending on the size. I did, I believe all y'all have the handouts, but there's pictures in here that kind of show, you can see there's parks that we do big potholes. Where we're using our new equipment, packers, a lot of times, you know, we're getting into city streets, we're also having to go back in like major roads like Miller's Ferry, even though we went in potholes, we're having to go back sometimes and fill in smaller potholes now that are being created, because everyone, once the road gets fixed, then everyone likes to travel down it, and then, you know, it kind of messes the road up. The other thing we do, so typically our maintenance schedules, so what we try to do, and this is, in a perfect world, Monday and Tuesday would be mowing right-ofways. Now, Wednesday and Thursday, we'd be doing asphalting and then cleaning up the city squared, and then Friday, we would do signs and storm orders. But with the weather, or if we can't get asphalt, that kind of has to change. So it's kind of, in a perfect world, this would be our, you know, our schedule, what we plan on trying to do. But as you know, here lately, it's either been raining Monday, or if it's not raining Monday, we call the asphalt plan on Tuesday, and then they don't have asphalt till two o'clock. And then what we have started doing is Lupe and the guys have actually been using hot mix asphalt, and so it gets harder, lasts longer, but the problem is, is we don't have a truck that we can go an hour away, wait an hour in line, and then travel an hour back, and then we have one big brick of asphalt. So we've been getting our asphalt off of post oak. Typically, we come, when they bring it back, they're instantly putting it in the potholes. And that's why a lot of the potholes are actually starting to fill in, they're, even where the trucks are driving on, it's actually turning out real nice. The signs, so typically on sign repair, so typically when the guys are out, they check stations first thing in the morning. That's the first thing, check parks first thing in the morning. And while they're out checking parks, obviously, we all know, there's six parks everywhere, it's all over town, and while they're out, you know, they're keeping an eye out for signs, whether they're either being knocked over, or, you know, eighteen miller's ran it over, a major windstorm's came through and blew it over, or they're crooked, and they're actually fixing those signs. If it's a quick fix, they can fix it right then and there. A lot of times, it'll be scheduled for Friday unless it's like, for instance, a stop sign, something that could pose a danger for our citizens, so we have them fix it right then and there. The other thing I wanted to touch on is, I get a lot of calls about the highway. I've been in contact with TechDOT, so TechDOT mows four times a year for Wilmer. That's May, July, September, and December. Now, they won't give us a definite date of, in that month, just sometime during that month is when they mow. It's also the same thing for litter pickup. Litter pickup, they only pick up six times a year, and that's per, with the contract that they have, that's all they do. I've asked them, you know, about, because I know there's several times that even my guys, we've stopped and picked up rocks out of the roadway, we stopped and we picked up trash, you know, going out of the bridge, something, a truck loses something on the back of it, and we're picking it up, because if not, guess where it's going to go? It's going on our city streets and our storm drains and everything else. Kind of went through that fast, sorry. But I also got to remember with our Public Works, with, you know, under Public Works, we have water, we have wastewater, we have tree trimming to do, we have, I mean, we have a two-hundred-and-twenty acre preserve we take care of along with mowing, so it's a lot of work, and thank you, council members, for approving two more positions. They are still open, so we still only have four guys in Public Works who is doing everything. So again, thank you all for allowing us to bring on a temporary agency. It's great. We've had four temps one day, and then the rest of the days, we'll either have one temp or two temps, or sometimes three, but we have, in the four weeks, we have, I think, one week that we had four temporary employees over here the whole time. Water, you know, we've started with, we're getting Freezing Nichols to help us for lead copper service line inventory that is required by the state. That's going to be a lot of work. We have our sewer crew who's actually doing preventative maintenance, which if you recall before, the sewer crew, we literally had hot spots. Now we're able to go out and do preventative maintenance, which is preventative cleaning, it prevents from grease from sticking to the walls of main lines. It's preventing it from collecting, causing sewer backups. Our water guys are going out, yes, there's still some meters that we start to go out and manually rig, not all of them are a hundred percent Badger E-series. and manually rig. Not all of them are 100% Badger E-Series. The other thing, too, like my department, that we do, is we do building maintenance, which helps save the city money. Sometimes we have to, sometimes we fix our own equipment, because we have a tractor, a ram, that hydraulic ram went out, and they said it's going to take four to six weeks to get one in. So we had to go buy a ram, and we fix it in-house. There's a lot of things, you know, with Public Works that we do. I didn't have, I don't have the whole list with me. There is a whole list of, I can get sewer services, water mains, repairs we did. A lot of people, to me, sit there and say that they don't think we do a lot. There's issues that arise. For instance, there's a main line that no one knew about, wasn't on any map, that broke in the field. Well, there's a sewer line in the same field that no one knew about. And it actually goes deeper than anything we have today. So that took us 36 hours. And not 36 hours, we do a little bit here, a little bit there, no, that's 36 hours straight. And then the guys still come to work the next morning. Or if it's all the way through that day, go home, rest, come back the next day. But...
So, thank you, Wayne.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Grab my cell phone.
So, one of the things that came up was the maintenance along I-45. And so we do have still an active project with the Green Ribbon project. And so that has not been finalized out and accepted. So the two positions, along with the temporary positions, were proposed in order to be able to maintain those landscaped areas. So until those projects have been accepted, we are unable to continue to do anything. It's actually the contractor that's doing the maintenance until it's finally accepted through our staff and through text dot staff. So, once that's finalized out, we'll see city crews out there that are helping to maintain the landscape here. With regard to the mowing and litter along the freeway, any litter or debris pickup along the freeway, that is part of the state contract. And we can bring someone from text dot, as Commissioner mentioned, Season at Norris Staff were able to be here tonight. But we will bring someone here to just talk through that process. Some cities have explored whether or not to take their proportionate share of what the state pays for maintenance, and take on that responsibility. And so we would like for the council to be fully informed as to what that looks like versus what it really equals out to in terms of what our staff would have to do. But that is an option where the city could take it on. Text dot will give us our proportionate share, and then we can take that money and infuse it into our budget if that's what the council wants to do or chooses to do as part of the ongoing maintenance for 45. But for right now, that project has not been accepted. So we can't touch the landscaping. And right now, we're under contract. And so we can't get any of the litter pickup. What they did just here recently, on Monday, came out and mowed, and you can see where they mowed down one side of the freeway, and then they came back up. And that's how you know that's text dot.
Yes, I do see where they mowed down one side and up the other. But I also see that they left bumpers, tires, and weeds that are as tall as I am, that are under the underpass. They neglected that completely. And that is such an eyesore. And Wayne, you know that I've been speaking about this for a couple of years now. I feel like that that is the focal point of our city.
I agree.
Everybody that comes into or out of our city passes that corner. And I just would love to see it be presentable and not full of litter, and not have weeds and, those bags of rocks sat down there for almost a year. And I don't know why they can't finish it. But when they do finish it, my husband got tired of me rapping about it. And so he went down and visited with Ferris, because theirs always looked so manicured. It's never got glitter, it's never got weeds and grass tall. And they, again, have assumed the responsibility of, I think they've hired a contractor to keep it clean and neat. When I come off of the highway, there is a great big old puddle that I call my rain gauge. And it's been there for years. And it just goes out all over the exit ramp off of 45 when you're southbound. There's a great big old hole that's, you know, when the little shoulder ends, then there's a great big hole that does almost need to fill us long. And if your tire slips off that pavement, you're down about this far. I don't know why those kind of things can't be addressed. And whenever they decide to turn that over and let us have the jurisdiction and the authority to clean it, then I would like to see that that be a priority. And that, you know, litter is picked up, and that the grass is mowed, and that, you know, we can be proud of that place, and have people say, this is Wilmer, and look at the improvements they've done, instead of just kind of when you go by. There's so much that we can do to make that, as a matter of fact, I think there was postings this week on about your trash bins, you know, to put them out late, and get them out, get them back, so that we can make our city more presentable. You know, this is something that we can all picture and help on something like that. But it seems to me that our city staff should, when they see something that needs to be done, stop and do it. And you can't tell me that you don't pass by that overpass and see the litter that's been thrown out. And I think that ought to be a priority of our crew daily. And that's just what I think.
Well, I'm going to make a comment, and I'm glad that Mr. Price is in the audience to hear this, because I want to piggyback on what he said about mapping our waterways. One of the biggest problems with our roads in our town is we don't have proper drainage. And, you know, just a little bit of rain that we've had, I've got standing water in my front yard from the ditch, because Colbert doesn't drain. You've repaired that corner at Second Street by my house, I think, three times this year. And it's going to continue, that asphalt's going to pop back up, mainly because of water. The issue that she brought up at Belt Line in 45, it is a, it's not very nice, thinking about somebody pulling off to get gas at that corner. What do they think when they see that, see our city? That's the first impression. And there is water, there's standing water there even a week after it has run. It's because there's no drainage there. You know, if, when construction comes up and they rebuild that facility, I'm thinking that gas station or that corner, it might improve some. But that's not going to help the other quarters. You know, every morning, I take that Dowport Road to 45. And that's a new concrete road. And the corner right there is breaking and sinking. And there's standing water there constantly, because it doesn't drain, it has nowhere to go. And so, you know, that, you know, we talk about roads. And I remember going to TML, and I made that comment, because I can name you roads, before we even did our study, you know, some of the major issues in our town. Because I grew up here. Many of us who've lived here knew what roads were going to come out on, and that's that before the study came out. But we can't repair those roads until we really repair the drainage in our town. You know, I talked about, we need drainage, we need sidewalks and then roads. And, you know, that's money, that's a big amount of money. And so, you know, to me, I think there needs to be issues to where, you know, we talked about mapping our drainage and our waterways, that's going to be our first priority to help get some of this water out of our town. It will help with our roads, it's going to help with mosquitoes. Anyway, thank you for listening. If you can do anything about helping drainage, that, they think that's your main priority.
Right. And I know, speaking on drainage, so, previous staff, I don't know if you're aware of, our water mains. Okay.
I just have one quick question. One quick question. Coming under 45, when it rains, that, the left-hand side, that whole lane is like, you're just black water that you have to drive for when we get two-inch rain, or inch and a half rain, that's what I've been hearing, that you get, getting all just that, has that been reported to text dot?
Uh, I've actually talked to the Green Ribbon, to the gentleman with that, because they actually covered up a storm drain inlet for that water that goes in there, and the rocks are impeding the water from going in there, since they put the rocks over. But yes, I have brought up that.
An O-spot or what? But it's just like, you know, what you're going to run over when you go through it?
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Wayne, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain to me the right-of-way responsibility? In other words, on my road, the sewer line goes down one side, and then it crosses and goes down the other. And there's those great old big manholes that stick up about this far. There's several along the way. Whose right-of-way is that?
So typically, are you talking, are you referring to as for mowing, or for, our ordinance for mowing was the property owner's responsible all the way to the edge of the street?
Yeah.
But what are you, I don't understand what you're referring to, like, who's to mow around it?
I think I know where you're getting to. So actually, on council's agenda, we have a presentation for stormwater ordinance, and proposing to council, after about a year, they've been studying it. And Wilmer has a lot of drainage ditches that we have heard that has come up as strategic planning as a priority, that residents, some residents have a very steep incline in front of their house. And so the stormwater utility fee will help address that, and provide staffing that will be able to either buy a contractor or buy additional staff to assist the city with taking care of that. And so the good majority of those fees are paid by development, which would be the commercial industrial side. And then it will be up to the council to decide what residents will pay. So there will be a presentation on that in the next meeting to address it.
There was a crew, and they were gone before I could stop and ask them. I don't know who they worked for. But they were working on the bridge on Good Road, Sackgood Road, because it has washed out so badly that the fence on the, one of the sides, is, all you can see is the concrete where it used to hold the post into the ground. Now then, the post is holding the concrete. I mean, seriously, there's two or three posts with just a hunk of concrete on them, and they're not even in the ground because it's washed out. That crew was there. They weren't there today when I came home, because I had planned to stop and ask them, you know, who, were they sitting?
So that is our contractors doing bridge repair, is who that is. That's the contractors we hired for bridge repair. The bridge, so the erosion and stuff.
They weren't there, and this fence is, I mean, it's not done, but they apparently picked up their stuff and gone. So I just wondered if they were, thought they were through, or what. Could you take a look at that?
Yes, ma'am. I sure will.
So back to the drainage and the ditches. When it's too steep to actually get down and mow, what?
So, the council about two years ago directed staff during strategic planning to explore ways as to how we can assist with that. And so there was a study that was conducted along with the roadway water and wastewater impacting study. And so that is a way that the residents would have a service that could pay for it. We were told in previous years that staff, in addition to everything else that they were doing, they would go to mow some of those areas. But it wasn't, there wasn't a rhyme or reason as to who got mowed and who didn't. So this is establishing that program, funding the program, and then mapping it out, so you get the mapping that's associated with it. And then mapping the areas that either staff or contractor can come in and mow the drainage dishes, ditches, especially in the older residential area where we tend to, we've been tracking the, some of the complaints that we get from residents regarding that. And so, we have consultants that will walk us through that, and will be asking council for information regarding what should be charged moving forward as stormwater policy.
I have two questions, and I'll be very quick and brief, and you can be quick and brief in your response, because I know we've got many other things to discuss. I feel like we throw away money a lot with the asphalt, that we're putting Band-Aids that last two months, and then we have to put in another Band-Aid. You spoke about, we didn't have the right truck to get the better asphalt. What kind of truck would you need?
We don't have a lay-down machine, or a hot mix trailer, or anything like that. So when I came aboard, if you remember, literally, it was a shovel, and they were throwing it in a hole, and driving over the truck, and leaving it going on to the next one. Since then, we've moved from being old school to now we have the tractor to pack it in. Now we're using hot mix. You know, again, the issue is, we can't go way out in Irving, because the next closest plant, so Austin 360, or Austin on, one on Post Oak, and then the other one is in Irving. And that's the issue, is you'd have to travel way out to get it and come back in.
And my second follow-up question is, if we have the two open jobs that were posted that we approved last year, Wayne, what's your reasoning, or what do you think the reason why those positions have not been filled?
Honestly, I don't know. There was one guy that was hired here last, he stayed two days and left.
It's a hard job.
Right, exactly.
You're outside all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So this is what was pulled up out of, there was actually, that's only one out of three that were pulled out of, there was three spools of rope in Surmae, on Miller's Ferry at Green River, in the main line. Three spools of rope.
Wow.
How it got in here, I don't know.
So, and that's, you know, one of the issues we have, I mean, that Surmae is 12, 13 foot deep. So, and, I mean, it's, to me, I'm not going to say why I think it got in there, but I have my theories. But, so, but yeah, and that's the thing, is these big jobs, you know, no one plans on a big job just popping up. But when it does, it becomes emergency, it becomes a priority. And then, a lot of times, in a deep like that, to be safe, you know, it's almost, the water, the sewer, and Public Works, we're all there, we're watching everyone, because everyone's life's in everyone else's hands. So when it's that deep, a lot of times, it takes the whole crew that we have. So when it's that deep, a lot of times, it takes the whole crew that we have. Yes, ma'am.
Do y'all try to go around through town, not, not when the sewer lines are clogged up, but just as a routine thing? With that, is it a jetter that y'all have that flow the lines out?
So on the storm drains, a lot of times, um, and like, I've been, a lot of citizens will call me, yes, when it, when it comes to hard rain, yes, we do drive through town, because a lot of times, we want to see where the stoppage is, because we want to be able to put the jet hose in there where the stoppage is, not, hey, it's flooded here, but we think the issue's three driveways back, could you start there? We want to see exactly where the issue's at. That way, we can jet the issue then and there. When it rains, yes, ma'am.
But y'all are trying to go around and, and make changes, but I've never seen anyone over there on our side.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's, it's fixing to happen, because drainage is getting slower and slower. But get a lot of mud and dirt from down there where they're digging and, you know, working construction. It's coming down the roadway going into storm drains, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, discuss and receive a presentation on the take home vehicles policy.
Honorable mayor, distinguished members of council. So again, Mayor Pertim requested additional information about the take-home vehicles. What we have tonight has more to do with the Public Works Department related to the policy that they rotate weekly to be able to take home a vehicle to respond with their forty-five minutes to any water or sewer emergencies that happen here in town. It's rotated, it's not necessarily by location or where they stay. Everyone on the crew has to serve as the on-call. They do take a city vehicle home. It's only one truck, goes home on a Friday, they drive it back and forth for that week, and then the next person will take the vehicle home. The vehicle should not be used for shopping or for, you know, there are parameters that are listed in our personnel policies related to if they're on their way into work, if they get stopped, you know, just for gas or something related to a necessity, but not necessarily for like, like their personal thing. And so, um, that's an industry standard, it's best practices. You know, and we use, that's the only department now that uses the take-home vehicle that is not public safety-related. I would like to defer if you'd like to talk in detail about take-home vehicles for police and fire until a time that the police chief and fire chief have had adequate time to prepare and provide a presentation related to their take-home vehicle policy. But for the only other department that takes home vehicles would be Public Works.
Thank you for that information. The purpose, or the reason that I asked about it, was about three or four Sundays ago, I was down at Ruckshaw Brothers in Ferris, and so was a Wilmer truck with me. And so, I wondered if they're allowed to use it for personal use when they take it home. I was under the impression it was for on-call for business only, but that doesn't include going grocery shopping.
So we know about that situation in particular and, and personnel that was involved in it, and I'm happy to discuss it during our executive session, if that's okay, as it would point out a specific employee, but I am aware of this.
Discuss upcoming strategic planning sessions scheduled on June twenty through twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Honorable mayor, distinguished council members. So this entire discussion has been surrounding setting prop arms. And the point of a strategic planning retreat is to set prop arms for the upcoming budget year. We annually have that following an election. If you all recall, since I've been here, after an election, we immediately schedule council orientation for the newly elected council members, and then we schedule a date to talk with the consultant about what it is that the council would like to see or the new council members would like to see for the upcoming year. We have been working with the ELO group, which is Mike Conde, who, in which we've hosted the retreat in various locations. The first year, I believe, it was held here at the community center. The second year, I think we went to Cedar Valley College. We went to, um, a couple of years, and then last year, we went to U N T. This year, Kristen had, we heard comments from last year that it should be closer, that it should be more navigable for citizens who may not have good mobility issues. And so, she has explored looking at closer, which would be like a certain regional airport. They have a conference room there, and it has a restaurant next door where we can have food. We're gonna do a day, one day. Typically do a day and a half. First day is walking through some of what had happened last year, giving an update on what has been done, and then hearing from council what, what the priorities are for the upcoming year. So our consultant this year, his family has made the decision to, that he would want to retire, and so he has recommended someone who has taken on several of his cities. We also followed our purchasing policy, which is to look at three different consultants. And we did that, and we provided a memo at the last meeting that we had selected Alan Sims, who was recommended by the ELO group to continue to work with council, and then work, you know, he's worked with Mike and has a similar style. And we had that date planned for June twentieth and twenty-first, if that is the continued desire of the council.
May I ask, how do you feel about the community concern?
I don't think y'all wanna hear my personal feeling. That was the most boring thing I've ever said. The most boring thing I've ever said through in my life, that, and I'm, I'm sorry that just, everybody was just like, trying to stay awake, and I didn't get anything out of it. It felt like I was a five-year-old, you know, sitting there, then talking something. I woke up to that, so.
So we, we did speak with Mr. Sims on some of the feedback that we received last year, and he has indicated that his thought is different and that he really would want to work on the council dynamic of how you unify a vision to accomplish what it is that we want. If it is the desire of the council to make that or reduce the amount of time where the focus is really prioritizing, one of the things he talked about was the fact that, and I'll, I'll use Council member Jacobs, when the consultant asked, did you want to rewrite the mission and vision? If you basically rewrote it, and so, one of the things that Mr. Sims suggested is that this current council create a, a mission and vision versus feeding off of what the previous council had done so that it better reflects what you all want to accomplish moving forward. So that, that would be different. We could have talked to him about reducing it from a day and a half to maybe a day. We can talk about, you know, any other feedback that we'd like to provide to the end, and but it is a way of outlining what, what you would like to do in the upcoming year, and that's what staff uses as the playbook for the upcoming year, just working through consistency in, in your leadership and making sure that the staff understands so we, we're, we're not getting disjointed direction from the council. So, you know, I've heard a lot this evening regarding, you know, what you would like to focus on in terms of infrastructure and our relationship with Tech Dot and what that looks like moving forward. So those are things that we can make sure that we include. But we, we do anxiously await to hear from the council and what the agenda looks like for the upcoming year.
Um, I have attended the last two sessions that you're describing. And it seems to, I mean, I, I really don't know what the cost is to the city for us to do that. Obviously, we have to pay the facilitator, we have to pay maybe for the facilities.
Big screen.
Perhaps, I know there's snacks involved and whatever, so I don't know what the total cost was. But it seems to me that the most benefit that I got out of that, pardon, was the discussion that we've had among ourselves as far as vision for what we wanted to see happen in our city and how to get there. And it's my opinion that if we just scheduled a roundtable discussion with our own, on our own property and our own people, we can still accomplish that same thing without having to pay a facilitator that's gonna bring toys and shirts and stuff that we don't really need. That's just my opinion. I think the, the discussion and ideas are a great thing, and that we need to pursue that. But this is the group that we, that presented those ideas, and we can do that with each other.
If I can piggyback on that, you know, being in, working in the, in the school system, a lot of times, we do have these retreats, and sometimes it's important that you do develop your team. It got kind of monotonous with some of the games that I felt were not purposeful that we did. And, you know, to me, I think that I would like to see that half morning, that one morning that we did where we had all the chart paper, we talked about all the different categories of, it was public works, it was parks, it's all the different categories of funding issues that we did. And we walked around, and we, everyone just wrote on those boards, or on that paper, and then we did like a gallery walk and looked around, and, you know, we put checks about, yes, we agree with that, or things like that. That's very beneficial. So I do think that it does serve a purpose, but to me, I would like for us to schedule a time to bring in people, like Tech Dot. Give them an hour to come in and talk about what, what they do and how they can help our city. And we can talk to them about needs. Bring in Mr. Price, bring in potentially Parkland. Bring in other people that have an impact, you know, bring in major developers. So that maybe they can talk about things that they might see happening. So that, you know, of course, it would be confidential, but so that we can see some ideas of where we're going, and then take that morning meetings to our vision plan. And I think we can do it all in one day. I will be hon, to me, I thought coming back on Saturday morning was not beneficial. We didn't do much that next day. That I think we can do it all in one day, but I do think it serves a purpose, but I think it needs to be reorganized.
Ms. Sims, please read the items into action.
Executive session, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, the City Council will now recess into executive session, closed meeting, to discuss the following. For A, Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice regarding the current fiscal year position, analysis, budget, items, and salaries of employees. For B, Section 551.074A1 of the Texas Government Code to deliver the appointment, appointment, employment, evaluation, resignation, duty, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit city administrator.
At this time, we will now, uh, we are now recessing our chat. I'm sorry. We're going into executive session at seven twenty-nine. We are now closing the special work session, and I will be opening the regular meeting for the City Council.
Eight fifty-eight. Eight fifty-eight.
Eight fifty-eight, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Wilmer City Council's order at eight fifty-eight. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to extend a warm welcome and thank, thank you for joining us this afternoon. Your presence reflects a strong commitment to civic engagement, and we truly are interested in the work and progress of our city. As a reminder, this is a formal meeting of the City Council. We ask that everyone in attendance, please maintain respect, decor, without the proceedings. There will be no disruptions, outbursts, or inappropriate language. All while not be, will not be permitted, and individuals may be asked to leave or be removed by the Sergeant of Arms if necessary. Thank you again for being here and for supporting the continued progress of our city. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Harris to lead our invocation. We will ask everyone to please stand if you are able. Afterwards, the pledge of allegiance, I will lead.
He had another engagement.
Oh, is that what it was?
He had, he had another engagement.
Is there someone in the audience?
Mr. Price, would you like to do our invocation?
I know. Believe it or not, my dad, after swimming my son to ministry, and the Lord skipped me, but I'm, I stay in church just enough, and may we bow our heads. Gracious Father, we come before you tonight. We come because this is the only way we know how. You know, but for you, we would not be here. As we assemble tonight to do the governance of that which you have decreed for these, your servants, bless us. Bless us so that we'll Bless us so that we'll understand at the end of the day, it's about your will being done and not ours. Bless each and every family here. Bless us as we go forward and may we always give you the praise because only you deserve it. In your name, we say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who stands?
Okay, we are now moving on to our presentation. And our first one is the proclamation recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week. And Councilmember Jacobs will be presenting this. And if Chief Gifford would like to come up and accept the proclamation. I see all the guys had left, so.
Good evening. Whereas the city of Wilmer, Texas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Wilmer. And whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service with the members of the Wilmer Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care. And whereas emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, dispatchers, police officers, educators, administrators, nurses, physicians, and trained members of the public. And whereas the members of emergency medical services career volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Laura Jacobs, on behalf of Sheila Peta, the Mayor of the City of Wilmer, and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Wilmer, Texas, do hereby proclaim May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Wilmer. And I urge all residents to observe the recognition of all of our emergency medical service providers. We appreciate you even after the fact.
No worries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Our next proclamation is recognizing June nineteenth, um, for Juneteenth. Whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation issued over two years earlier on January first, eighteen sixty-three, and to officially declare freedom for all enslaved people in Texas. And whereas the announcement of emancipation in Texas marked one of the final acts of liberation in the United States following the Civil War. And this day has since come to be known as Juneteenth, symbolizing the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of ending this, ending of slavery in the United States and has long been recognized by communities across Texas and the country as time to honor African-American heritage, culture, and resilience. And whereas the observance of Juneteenth is a time for reflection, remembrance, education, and celebration. A time to acknowledge both the struggle and the achievements of African-Americans throughout history and today. And whereas June seventeen, twenty twenty-one, Juneteenth National Independence Day was signed into law as a federal holiday and the state of Texas has officially recognized Juneteenth since nineteen eighty as a significant, significant part of its culture and historical identity. And whereas the city of Wilmer encourages its residents to come together in unity, education, and celebration to honor the significance of Juneteenth in shaping a more just and equitable society. Now therefore, I, Sheila Peta, Mayor of the City of Wilmer, and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Wilmer, Texas, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth Recognized, Recognition, Recognition Day in Wilmer. And urge all citizens to reflect on the meaning of freedom, to recognize the injustice of the past and to celebrate the progress made while continuing the pursuit of equity and justice for all. Michael caught very loud. Okay, number three is discuss and receive a presentation from Freeza Nichols Incorporated regarding storm water utility fees. Ms. Rona?
Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the council, uh, we would like to, uh, request to table this item until the next meeting.
Okay.
The consultants had to.
Counsel, may I get a motion? Okay, no action?
Okay, we, so we are now going to move on to our community announcement. This is where staff will provide updates on the following upcoming events and, um, opportunities. Our Community Services Manager, Angelica, will now present those two items.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Wilmer. I'd like to take a moment to share a few exciting updates and upcoming opportunities in our community. First, we invite you to join us for our Juneteenth celebration on Tuesday, June seventeenth, from five to seven P M. It will be in the evening, it will be an evening of reflection, unity, and celebration. To R S V P, R S V P, please contact the library at nine seven two four four one three 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 five. Next, mark your calendars for Friday, June twenty-seventh, for the highly anticipated Sparks Fireworks and Drone Show. It promises to be a spectacular event for all ages and we hope to see you all there. Lastly, the city is currently accepting applications for boards and commissions. If you're a resident interested in getting more involved and making a difference in our community, now is a great time to apply. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now move on to the cit- citizens' comments.
We have.
Go ahead.
We have Ms. Vicky Van Grift who would like to speak.
Ms. Vicky, please state your name and your address and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Wilmer citizens. Uh, I'm Vicky Van Grift. Live at two forty seventy Witt Street. I am here tonight representing the Wilmer Library Advisory Board as chairperson. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our summer programs, a little adware here, that are coming up. I would like to expand on the Juneteenth event. We are planning our Juneteenth celebration and we are anticipating great output from the citizens of our community. And planned, um, during that time, for, on the June seventeenth, five through seven, we are going to have a Soul Line Dance. This is a class slash party. And if you happened to be at, uh, our previous gathering at the school, boy, did we have some dancing going on. So we are looking forward to that. But we have a lot of family events planned. Coming up on June tenth, the Y M C A Tech Hub will be here. And this is a video game truck. And this is for, uh, the whole family. So you adults get out here with the kids. You can challenge those smart kids of yours to a little bit of a, a competition on the games. Uh, then on the twenty-fourth, we're having touch a truck from five through seven P M. And I'm sorry, I can't tell you much about that. But on June twenty-seventh, we are having the Tech Truck Parrot Museum. And we had that the past two years, I believe. And they offer an opportunity to do various, uh, science projects in my estimation. Uh, I was just asked one year to come in and man a table. I had no idea they were going to rope me into making all sorts of stuff with the kids. So it is quite exciting. The kids really enjoy all these activities. But, uh, I encourage you, if you don't have a library card, please come to the library and obtain one. Uh, you do not have to have a library card to attend these activities. They are for, for the community. And we ask that you come and support our library as well as our children and our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
That is it.
Okay. We will now move to the agenda and I will ask Secretary Downs to please read.
Item five, consider approval of minutes for the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Regular City Council Meeting. Item six, consider approval of minutes for the May first, twenty twenty-five Regular City Council Meeting. Item seven, consider resolution R two zero two five dash zero six zero five C adopting the Dallas County Twenty Twenty Five Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
May I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the three items on the consent agenda.
My second.
Thank you. May I have your vote, please?
Yes.
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 Six to zero. It passes. Five to zero. I'm sorry. We will now move to the consent agenda. Uh.
Sorry, that was my fault. Action agenda.
Yeah, action. Ms. Downs?
Item number eight, discuss and consider election of a mayor pro temp. Um, the Texas Local Government Code, Section two two point zero three seven B states that the first meeting of each new governing body are as soon as practical, practical. The governing body shall elect one alderman to serve as the president pro temp for a term of one year. The mayor pro temp acts in the absence of the mayor, performing duties such as presiding over meetings and representing the city in ceremonial functions.
Okay, ladies, gentlemen. May I have a motion, uh, have a, I'm going to open it to the floor. Who?
I nominate Councilmember Phyllis Slough and I move to close the nominations.
Can't she do that?
All she can do is just nominate you.
Any others?
Uh, I nominate.
I nominate the current mayor pro temp, Linda Nealon, for a second.
I decline.
Okay. I'll start over again.
Well, but she, no, I mean, with all due respect, she can make, she can, either one of them can make a motion to nominate Ms. Nealon. That's what they do. Now, if there's not enough votes, then you can do it. Yes.
Okay.
Do what? I can't.
Do what?
The, the mayor pro temp steps in. If the mayor is, say, out of town, if the mayor is sick and can't perform certain duties, then the mayor pro temp steps in and handles those types of things.
I nominated Phil.
Oh, she wants you to do it.
And then I got a nomination.
Y'all could arm wrestle for it if you want.
Okay, we're going to vote. Vote for Phyllis. Please say aye.
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 May I get your vote, please? Yea or nay?
You can vote for yourself if you wanted to.
You can abstain if you would say.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Okay.
Looks like you're staying.
Excuse me?
Those.
We had three.
Just a minute. Now, I would like to have the vote for, uh, that, that was for Ms. Slough. Now it's for Ms. Linda. How do you vote?
Madam Mayor, we, we did a five oh vote for Ms. Ms. Slough, or four to four to zero, four to zero. So, uh, it's.
Y'all want to keep Ms. Slough as the mayor pro temp?
That, that's what the vote was for, so unless somebody wants to reconsider it, we move on with Ms. Slough as the mayor pro temp.
Okay. Phyllis, you're the mayor pro temp. Okay.
All right, number, item nine, discuss and consider a recommendation to the City Council for preliminary plat, parent addition located in the city of Wilmer consisting of one lot on approximately eight four point seven one three acres. The subject property is situated in the Benjamin L. Moore Survey, abstract number eight six five, H W Spidey Survey, abstract number one four five nine, and International and Great Northern Railroad Company Survey, abstract number one seven three eight, City of Wilmer, Dallas County, Texas, and generally addressed as one hundred Lavender Road, case number P P dash two five dash zero two.
Good evening. I wasn't sure if a PowerPoint would be needed, so I just printed one out. Um, the subject property is located within the light industrial zoning and consists of approximately eighty-four point seven one three acres. The property is located in the city of Wilmer and is zoned light industrial. The properties to the north, east, and south of the subject property are also zoned light industrial. To the west are properties zoned heavy industrial. The purpose of this preliminary plat is to create a single lot of record from an unplatted tract of land. While there are no specific development plans at this time, the owners intend to develop the property in the future. Plating the lot now will help them prepare for that development when the time comes. Furthermore, the plat dedicates a sixteen-foot right-of-way along Lavender Road and Miller's Ferry Road. It also proposes two access drives along both Lavender Road and Miller's Ferry Road. The, this item meets all the technical requirements of the subdivision ordinance. During the planning and zoning commission meeting on May twenty-second, this item was recommended for approval with the condition that the verbiage in addition to the city of Wilmer be included in the first paragraph of the owner's certificate. All this language is not typically found in this section of the plat and does not adhere to standard surveying practices. The applicant agreed to add it to satisfy the commission. Staff has verified that this language has been incorporated into the plat. Staff has verified that this language has been incorporated into the plat, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Counsel, do you have any questions? It'll take a minute. What will this property be used for?
At this moment, I don't think they have any specific development plans, and staff isn't aware of exactly what they're going to be developing on there.
So it will have to come back to us again?
Yes.
So all they're wanting to do is just bring the city, the property in?
So all they're wanting to do is platter property.
Yes, it is. Now, this is right at Miller's Ferry and Lavender?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
It's across from the Twins.
Yeah. Okay. May I get a motion?
I have a question. That's a big piece of property for only three entrances. Two from Miller's Ferry and one from Lavender, or back, we got that backwards. Yeah, two from Lavender and one from Miller's Ferry.
I believe it's two along Lavender and two along Miller's Ferry. It's two on each road.
They can always come back and change it.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve this as presented.
Thank you. My second. Thank you. Okay, may I get a vote, please?
Yes.
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 That would be five to zero. It passes. Thank you.
Item number 10, discuss and consider a recommendation to the city council for a preliminary plat, Ramirez addition located in the city of Wilmer extraterritorial jurisdiction consisting of one lot on approximately 32.74 acres. The subject property is situated in the Joseph Rowland Survey Abstract Number 1198, City of Wilmer ETJ, Dallas County, Texas, and generally addressed as 1431 Mars Road, Wilmer, Texas, 75172, case number PP-25-03.
The subject property is located at 1431 Mars Road. It is located within Wilmer's ETJ and is approximately 32.74 acres. Currently, the property has a residence on it. Surrounding the subject property on all sides are similar rural residences also located within the city's ETJ. The purpose of this plat is to divide the subject property into three recorded lots from an unplatted tract of lot of land. One lot measures 26.51 acres and is designated for the existing residents, while the other two lots each measure 2.81 acres and are intended for future development. Furthermore, the plat includes a dedication of a 50-foot right-of-way along Mars Road to Dallas County. This item was recommended for approval at the May 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The item meets all the technical requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I do. And I don't know if this was discussed at P&amp;Z, but with Loop 9, they were going to try to make all traffic go Cook's Road, and Cook's Road was going to be remapped. That's pretty close to this property. How is that going to affect?
I am not sure exactly. I'm actually not very familiar with the city yet.
I understand, that's why I'm saying you may not be the answer to that. Did, was, do you know, was it addressed at P&amp;Z? I'm sure that they were on top of that because we have another proposed development to the north, to the west of that, ma'am? Oh, oh.
I am. There was no discussion brought up about the effects of Loop 9 in this area. My understanding is we've now only quite a bit further south of there. I was not aware of the projection of Loop 9 coming up.
Well... Yeah, Loop 9 would be Miller's Ferry. But Cook's Road connects with Miller's, I said Miller's Ferry, listen to me.
Malloy Bridge.
Malloy Bridge.
Right.
It's like, guys, please excuse me, with Malloy Bridge. And so Cook's Road is supposed to be remapped, remapped or re-moved a little bit further.
As a feeder into Loop 9?
Yes, that's going to be the major truck road that's going to go all the way to...
That's going to be Sunrise.
Yes.
Delver is the road that goes from Delve Line all the way to Mars, so I don't know, that wouldn't be a consideration. But this is just to the north of the Pike's...
Right, I understand, but it's, I'm looking at Cook's Road on the location map here, and it dead ends right there by this property. And if I remember, Cook's Road was going to be turned, and right now, Cook's Road has a zigzag in it.
Right.
And we were trying to get rid of that zigzag. That's why the Cook's Road from there to Malloy Bridge was going to move further east, so it would be a straight road that would go all the way to the north.
That information has not been brought in front of the P&amp;Z to consider in any sort, so I'm not sure what plans are there.
You know, it probably wouldn't affect this plat, but I mean, it's going to go right next to this property. If, just remembering from months and months and months ago. That's why I asked the administrator here, was that discussed on, because Cook's Road is going to have to go east.
And Loop 9 is going to be, need to take some feeder roads developed for that new planned, the new mud that was just approved to the east fairness.
Yeah.
A 5,200 acre development that is basically included. So I don't know how that additional traffic would be affected on Cook Road or Mars. So again, that information has not been presented to the P&amp;Z, and all as far as the projection of it extending further to the east. So I'm not able to answer that question because it has not been brought before us. But this is in the ETJ.
Right.
So city ordinances and zones are not affected by this request.
If it's developed, it will be probably brought into the city?
That's a good probability, and hopefully so. However, at this point in time, it's still outside of our area of control as to plating at this point in time.
Where are the entrances in for this property?
It meets all, when it comes to planning and zoning, it has all technical and...
Yeah, I'm looking at...
And that's why I'm sitting here in front of y'all today. Well, it's a road there.
You can always come back. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the plat as presented.
May I get a second?
My second.
Thank you both. Now may I get a vote?
Yes.
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 Okay. Some people are going to have to speak up just a little. Please.
Item 11, consider acceptance of the annual financial report, AFR/audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2023, as prepared by Foxbird and Company P.C., the city of Wilmer's independent auditors.
On a go main, members of council, I think that was my microphone. The city of Wilmer, Texas, engaged the independent certified public accounting firm, Foxbird and Company P.C., accountants and consultants, to perform the annual audit of the city of Wilmer, Texas, and its component units. The independent audit involved examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements, assessing the accounting principles used, and significant estimates made by management, and evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. The city staff and Foxbird and Company P.C. and advisors worked closely to ensure all requests and deadlines were met to accomplish this goal. The city received an unqualified audit opinion, which is the most favorable audit opinion. This type of opinion reflects that the city's financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented without any identified exceptions and comply with generally accepted accounting principles. The purpose of the AFR is to provide the city council, staff, citizens, and other interested parties with detailed information about the city's financial condition. After the AFR has been accepted by the city council, it will be placed on the city's website. A copy will be placed in the Wilmer Public Library, and it will be available for public inspection at City Hall. An original copy will be kept as a permanent record of the city in the city secretary's office. The purpose of this agenda item is to formally accept the AFR for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2023, by city council. This report is distributed to numerous financial institutions, bond rating agencies, the city's financial advisors, and grantors to comply with financial disclosure requirements. This report is designed to provide readers with an understanding of the financial status of the city and its results of operations. With that, I will yield the floor to Frank Conroy, who is the independent auditor for the city of Wilmer.
Good evening, thank you. Again, my name is Frank Conroy. I'm a CPA and shareholder with Foxbird and Company out of Dallas, Texas. As was just previously mentioned, we were engaged to perform the audit of the financial statements for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2023. Happy to mention that we did in fact issue a clean audit report or unqualified audit report. That language sounds contrary. I admit, when you say unqualified, it sounds like you don't know what you're doing, but that's accounting jargon for you. The reality of it is, is the strength of it mentioned, what that says is that the users of the financial statements can rely on the financial statements to be free of material misstatement. Materiality is a concept that is based on auditor judgment. It's not a concretely defined term, but essentially what it means is that in the event that there are misstatements in the financial statements, they are not significant enough to affect somebody's conclusions about the financial position or the results of operation of the city. In addition to the opinion, essentially, the opinion's a three-page portion of your approximately 85-page financial report. The opinion is essentially the only portion that belongs to Foxbird and Company. The rest of it belongs to the city and is developed by city management with our guidance and input to help them ensure that the presentation is consistent with generally accepted accounting principles as well as generally accepted financial presentation. During the course of the audit and as a part of the auditing standards, we're required to communicate certain matters to those charged with governance, in this case, that being the city council. Specifically, one of those things is we're supposed to report to you what we believe to be the most significant estimate embedded in your financial statements. There are quite a few estimates in the financial statements. For example, uncollectible receivables is an estimate. Your compensated absences, your liability for compensated absences is an estimate. Depreciation expense and accumulated depreciation as well as the useful lives for fixed assets are estimates. But what I conclude is the most significant estimate embedded in your financial statements is relative to your pension asset or pension liability. In your case, you have a small pension asset, approximately $173,000. That's unusual. In most cases, the local government will have a pension liability. But the asset comes about because essentially the assets inside your pension plan are sufficient to fund the estimated benefits to all the employees of the city at the date of its evaluation. That valuation is done as of December 31st, so there's a lag time between your fiscal year and 9/30/2024 versus the valuation date of 12/31/23. On page 53 of your audit report is a component of the required disclosure relative to the pension, and I believe this is one of the most significant disclosures in your financial statement because it shows you what the estimated pension asset would be in the event that the return on the pension assets were to increase or decrease by one percentage point. So having said that, your current pension asset is on the assumed return of 6.75%. You have $173,000 and change in pension asset. If that return were to decrease by one percentage point, 5.75%, you would swing to a liability of $1,400,000. And if it were to, I'm sorry, I may have misspoke, it's a pension liability of $173,000. In the event the return increases by one percentage point, you would swing to a pension asset of $531,000. So again, you can see that disclosure relative to your pension begins on page 47 and goes all the way through page 54. So it's quite extensive, the amount of information that's embedded in your disclosures to your financial thing, just relative to your pension alone. In addition to the most significant estimate and most significant disclosure in your financial statements, we're required to communicate to governance things like the timing of the audit, which was spelled out in the engagement letter. The, any difficulties we may have encountered in dealing with management, any knowledge we may have of what is referred to in accounting jargon as opinion shopping. That's essentially going out and consulting with other accounting firms in the event that they want to seek a more favorable presentation under generally accepted accounting principles. I'm happy to say, as far as I know, there was no such opinion shopping occurring, which is good. We're also required to disclose to you and report to you that our firm has complied with all required independence standards. By independence, in order for us to opine on the financial statements, we have to be independent of the city, and by that, it's independence in fact as well as appearance. For example, had we had any financial interest in the city, whether, if we own property in the city, if the city owed us money, those sorts of things could potentially impair independence, and thankfully, we were able to comply with all those. We also perform what are called non-attest services. The audit itself is called an attest service. Non-attest services potentially could impair independence. Non-attest services potentially could impair independence. In order for us to perform any non-attest services and not impair independence, we have to make sure that someone on staff or the council themselves has suitable skills, knowledge, and experience to accept responsibility for the decisions made in the reporting presentation in the financial statements. And they have to document that acceptance of that responsibility, which is done in the management representation letter, included in the reports that we've delivered to you or the management representation letter. And that also includes a copy of the adjusting entries that were developed during the course of the audit. There were quite a few audit adjustments. A lot of them are just for presentation purposes. For example, governmental accounting standards boards 68 and 75 are relative to your pension deferred outflows and deferred inflows. As a practical matter, city management generally does not adjust the books for those deferred inflows and outflows except for the financial statement presentation on an annual basis. So we don't really have any expectation that staff would develop those entries. We develop them, turn them over to staff, explain to them what we're doing, and have them accept responsibility. In addition to providing governance, a copy of the management representation letter, we also provide a management, a management letter where we report findings, where things could potentially be opportunities for improvement in your controls or your financial management oversight. The letter that I presented this year is essentially a repeat of what was done the previous audit for the September 30th, 2023, essentially because those conditions generally were not corrected or improved upon. I'm happy to say that now that we're in the process of doing the September 30th, 2024 audit, which we're close to finishing, and it's my expectation we'll be able to finish that before the end of June. One of the, I digress. I'm happy to say that in doing the September, or the June, yeah, September 30th, 2024 audit, there's been some turnover in staff and we're witnessing. My staff has attested to me that things have improved dramatically in the context of the timeliness and the accuracy of the responses we're getting when we ask for information, which has made the audit process go a lot smoother, which essentially, we didn't really begin the June 30th, 2024 audit till we finished the 2023 audit in the end of March. And here we are, we're just about ready to finish the 2024 audit as well and get you completely caught up on your audits. One of the complicating factors that came to light in performing the June 30th, I'm sorry, September 30th, 2024 audit is, single audit requirement was triggered because you expended in excess of $750,000 in federal funds during your fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024, which triggers the need for us to do additional compliance testing and reporting, which is in process right now. So having said all that, I open it to questions if anyone has any.
Counsel, do you have any questions? No questions, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. May I get a motion?
I guess I'm making all the motions. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the annual audit that ended September 30th, 2023.
Thank you, ma'am. And you will say, Ms. Phyllis, seconded.
Okay.
May I get your vote?
Yes.
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 Five to zero. It passes.
Item 12, discuss and consider the approval of October 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025, monthly financials. Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of council, the broad purpose of the city's financial statements is to enable the city to achieve and maintain a long-term stable and positive financial position and provide guidelines for the day-to-day planning and operations of the city's financial affairs. The following information is representative of fiscal year 2024, 2025, October 1st through 2024 through March 31st of 2025. Staff, before you is Patricia Albrecht, who is the consulting finance director.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. I'm happy to be here tonight to present to you the financials as of March 31st, 2025. I gave you a PDF of the PowerPoint presentation that I put together. And we're going to start with the general fund. So if you turn to page three of slides, the general fund, we will see a table there that gives you the total revenue. You have the first column with the adopted budget. And then the column right next to it are actuals as of March 31st. That's actuals that were received by the city and recorded as revenue. If you can see the first line there for property taxes, the adopted budget is $6.14 million. We have received the total levy collected. 100% of the property taxes have been collected as they came in, which is a very good sign of $7.03 million. Now, with that being said, in the next month or so, we're coming back to amend the budget, which is something that's standard practice and will just be kind of aligning all those numbers up so that the budgeted numbers more closely match our year-end projections. So we'll be coming back with that probably in July or August. And that's something that I usually do around that time after all of the departments have provided me with their end-of-year projections. It helps also for them to plan for the following year and see how we're doing. So we're doing great as far as property taxes. The sales taxes are also coming in very well at close to $3 million. As I mentioned before, the sales taxes are a little bit lagging behind because by the time the businesses pay the state and then the state records it and then the state, you know, gives it to the city, it's a little bit behind. But right at 47% is great. Alcoholic beverage taxes are not a big component of the, of the city's revenues. The franchise taxes are coming in as expected. The different entities that pay a franchise fee are kind of staggered the way that they pay. So I'm pretty confident that we will hit that $379,000, excuse me, for the franchise fee. One thing I do want to mention is how great it is to see that small town like the City of Wilmer has a very high revenue in sales tax. A lot of cities don't have that. Smaller cities, they have, their sales tax base is very low. So this is very close to your property taxes. That is fantastic. It's great to see that. You have a good revenue source there. And so licenses and permits, just right on track at 46%. Charges for current services are about 68%. And that makes up, you know, the mass fees and, you know, things of that nature. Fines and forfeitures with the court, you know, doing great at 85.6%. Other revenue is just miscellaneous things like, you know, it could be an insurance refund or what have you. And revenue from use of money, that's actually interest. We're getting some good interest rates there, and we'll go into that when we go into the investment reports. Intergovernmental is just that, maybe, you know, the county paid us some money for a grant or something of that nature. So the total revenues as of March 31st are $11.473 million, about 76% of our budgeted revenues. The next page, you can see a nice pie chart that shows you just what I went through right now. And it shows you that most of the revenue is coming in from property taxes and sales taxes. And then the rest is dispersed around, as you can see in the pie chart. So looking very, very well as of March 31st as far as revenues are concerned. We're gonna delve in now into the general fund expenditures. We could see there that the first section is for your general government, which includes your administration, you know, city secretary, finance, H R, I T, and all of those departments. Right at 42.83% of budgeted expenditures. Now, I did make a note at the end of the tables there and a couple of pages down that I have adjusted the numbers on this budget to reflect the council-approved salaries for this fiscal year. They had not been put in there yet. And so I put that in there so that it aligns to what was approved for fiscal year '25. You can see there all of the expenditures for general government and then public safety at $3.691 million, right at 46%. And the next page, we can see community services, which is senior center, library, and parks, about 19.5%. The, those departments don't spend a lot because there's not a lot of personnel in those departments. So the next section is community development with your public works, community service, planning and zoning, and engineering at 44.23% of expenditures, budgeted expenditures. And then the non-departmental is just that, things that don't fit into other categories such as your T M L insurance, you know, general liability insurance, any kind of payments like to Medline and things of that nature, any kind of contracts that the city has. So looking good, the total expenditures is $7.5 million. And when you take the revenue and you subtract these expenditures, it's a positive number, $3.9 million is the balance. So it went over, I'm sorry, it did not go over budgeted revenues. We have a surplus, so. It's looking good at March 31st. And there's the note that I had mentioned before. Numbers have been updated to reflect council-approved salaries for fiscal, fiscal year '25. General fund, like I said, has a positive outcome as of March 31st. You can see the next page, another pie chart with just a nice graphic there so you can see what takes up most of the expenditures. Public safety is 49.03%. And that is followed by the non-departmental and then general government, community development, and community services. The next page just shows the summary. As I mentioned before, when we compare the total actual revenues and subtract the total actual expenditures, you can see that the city closed out the period ending March 31st with a favorable balance with revenues exceeding the expenditures by $3.9 million. Any questions so far on the general fund? Okay. The next page is water and sewer fund. Water and sewer fund, you know, accounts for all the services that the city provides to its citizens with water and sewer and so forth. It is, you'll see up there where it says income because we treat it as sort of like a business. It's an enterprise fund, although the city doesn't make money off of it. But in accounting standards, we, we call it income. So for current services, you'll see your water revenues at $1,076,496. Sewer, $416,039. And penalties, extensions, and other at $61,586. Other income is your interest earned from money in the bank. So your total income as of March 31st is $1.9 million. And the budgeted revenues are about $3.9 million, about 48% of, so everything, excuse me, everything's right on track there, too. Revenues are looking good, or income is looking good for the water and sewer fund. Next page. Yeah.
It says penalty extension. So that means we, more people have been paying a penalty? Or is that lengthy, or what is that?
That's comprised of several things. It could be penalties for an unpaid payment of a bill. It, it's comprised of a lot of different charges that they're charging. And I don't have the, if you look at the actual financials that were included in your packet, you'll see all of the breakdown of what that is.
So it's more than what's projected already, and we still have four months remaining?
Yes. You usually cannot budget for that very well.
Yeah, but you go on years past.
And, and when we do go and adjust the numbers for the amended budget, I'll adjust that number as well, so it doesn't look like it's over. So it'll all be aligned.
That's alarming to me that our citizens are paying that more.
Like I said, it's not all penalties. There's a whole bunch of different categories in there. And if you look at the financials in the revenue section in the water and sewer fund, you will see a line item breakdown of what they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question on this.
Yes.
This has been a six-months financial. Why isn't it broke down monthly, individual months? What was spent in October, what was spent in November? Instead of all being clumped in, in one?
Usually it is. It's, it's done on a monthly basis.
Individual, yeah, individual months. Where you can, you know, the council's duty to track the money where it's going.
Yes, every month you should be.
You know.
So this is for.
I know you've done a good job on this, but it's.
This is for the month of March. And going forward, you will be getting it monthly.
Well, I've, I've heard that before, over and over and over. So, you know, I, I don't know you, so I'm not jumping on.
You're, you're going to be getting it every month. That's, that's how I do things. Every month you will be getting, I will be here to present for April and May and so forth. This is just to kind of catch us up. But yes, I, I understand, and you are correct. Yes, every month, in my previous life, I would present every month to the council.
Yeah, that's why it's helpful. Thank you.
So you will be getting, you'll see me here next month. Okay, so the next page is the pie chart. You can see your income there. Water and sewer fund is very, it's a simple fund. So you can see that the current services, which are your water and sewer income, takes up most of the pie chart. The next page is the water and sewer fund expenses. And here you'll have a breakdown of the different sections. Personnel and related expenses, that's, you know, personnel and benefits, about $324,000. Contractual services, $173,000. Operating supplies, about $83,000. Repairs and maintenance, $136,596. Utilities, $1.1 million. Utilities means the cost of water treatment, sewer treatment and so forth that the City of Wilmer pays to Lancaster, Dallas, and so forth. As you can see, that's the most expensive component of the expenses. Other expenses are just that, just miscellaneous expenses that come in, $23,614. Doubtful accounts, $419. The total expenses as of March is $1.86 million with an income over expenses of $21,907. So we have a favorable balance for the water and sewer fund. The next page is the pie chart again. And you can see that the pie chart is shown as a percentage of expenses, expense source that makes up the total of the $1.86 million that were expended. Following page will show you just a little snapshot again of the total income and the total expenses. And then when you subtract the two, you'll see the twenty-one thousand nine oh seven as of March 31st. It ends up in a favorable balance. Good question. So, any other questions? Wilmer Economic Development Corporation. So, this is the EDC. EDC is run by sales tax revenue. And you can see that as of March 31st, they had one point four-five million dollars in revenues collected from sales taxes, some interest income of twenty-nine thousand four eighty-four, for a total revenue of one point four-eight million dollars. Sixty percent collected already. It's a favorable outcome for March 31st. The total expenditures for personnel and benefits is thirty-one thousand oh twenty-seven. Meetings, conferences, thousand seventy-five. Capital projects, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand six sixty-eight. Other expenses and incentives, that's your abatements, Medline and others. Five fifty-four nine twenty. Professional services and charges, forty-six thousand two fifty-six. O and M is thirty-one thirty-four. That's usually like, you know, banking fees and things of that nature. Marketing, forty-eight thousand one seventy-eight. And then travel to conferences, seventeen hundred and thirty-six dollars. The total expenditures are nine hundred and sixty-four thousand nine ninety-four. When you take your revenue and subtract out your expenditures, you have five hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred dollars left. Again, the salaries and benefits have been updated to reflect what was adopted for fiscal year '25. The following page will have the pie chart with the revenues. Sales tax revenue, of course, makes up most of that fund and some interest income. So, the expenditures are shown in the following page, and that has a pie chart as well, for nine hundred and sixty-four thousand nine ninety-four. Most of the expenses are for those incentives. The following page is Wilmer Community Development Corporation, the CDC. And you'll see the table there that shows both revenues and expenditures. Very similar to the EDC. Sales tax revenue of one point four-five million. Interest income of twenty-six thousand two seventy-four, for a total revenue of one point four-eight million dollars, right at sixty percent. The expenditures show personnel-related expenses for almost fifty thousand. Other expenses and incentives, five hundred and sixty thousand one twenty, same thing as the EDC. Other expenditures, thirty-one thousand seven seven five. Professional services and charges, one sixty-seven five twenty-two. Operations and maintenance, two thousand eight seventy-eight. Marketing, forty-six thousand zero four seven. Deues and subscriptions, training, travel, six hundred and twenty-one. And grants, which is your green ribbon grant, six hundred and eighty-three thousand two twenty-nine. The total expenditures are one point five-four million dollars. The revenues did not exceed expenditures during this period by sixty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And this is due to the Green Ribbon Project expenditures that are being reimbursed. So, when you look at that total for grants, six hundred and eighty-three two twenty-nine, you will see in the following months, in fact, we received it in April. TechStar is reimbursing the city for that contractor. So, you will see in the next report how it's back in the green or the black, this fund. When the funds come back in, it cleans out that negative that you see there. But the city expends and pays the contractor, and then we go to TechStar and ask for that money back. So, it has come in. So, any questions on the CDC or EDC? Next page, the next couple of pages show you just the pie chart with the revenues, just a breakdown of what makes up the revenues and the expenditures as well. And that is it for that part of the presentation.
Yes. Is there any way possible I could get this six-month monthly breakdown, you know, just the six-month, like February, March, individual breakdown of financials? That was what I'd requested, six months together.
Do you want it for all the funds that I presented here? Water, sewer, general fund, CDC, and all that?
Just what's been spent, the balance, the budget, similar to this, but.
Sure, I understand. You just want the, you just want the monthly report.
The monthly, yes.
Yes, and, but do you want it for all the funds? Water, sewer, CDC, EDC, and all that? It's going to be a very thick book.
All of them's on the budget, so.
You want all, okay. It's going to be a big book.
But if it's too much trouble, that's fine.
No, I mean, I can, I can print it out, but it's going to be a big file.
That's what I would.
Sure. Yeah, it's not going to be as pretty as this, by the way.
Oh, well, I'm not looking for pretty.
It's just going to be printed out.
I'll just get the printout, yes.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? If not, may I get a motion?
I make a motion to table this because we hadn't had a chance to really look at anything. It's not six months of it all together, so table it to the next meeting.
Okay, we'll table it. Okay, when's the next meeting? I'll need a date.
July 17th.
July 17th? Okay. Thirteen. Thank you.
Item number thirteen, presentation of the first and second quarter investment report as described below.
Patricia, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was waiting for you to read something.
So, staff will provide a quarterly investment report for the period of October 1st through December 31st, 2024, and then January 1st, 2025, through March 31st, 2025, in accordance with the Public Funds Investment Act, Texas Government Code, Section 2256.005N. So, quarterly investment reports show investment portfolio transparency. Investment reports are in accordance with the Public Funds Investment Act, PFIA, the Texas Government Code, Section 2256.005N. With that, I'll turn it over to Patricia.
Thank you. So, this is the city of Wilmer's investment report presentation. And we usually present a quarterly investment report. And then at the end of the fiscal year, we do an annual, kind of, just tie everything together. So, if you turn your page to the first quarter investment report, we're going to be discussing October through December. And we do that in a quarterly way so that it is a cleaner, more concise look at the transactions that occurred within the city's portfolio during that timeframe. You turn to the third page where you have the table of the first quarter investments. You will see in the first column, I have put all of the, the name of the bank, which is CSB, that's your local commercial state bank. And then you'll see all of the accounts that are currently on deposit with that local bank. You will see the beginning balances as of October 1st, 2024. Any deposits or withdrawals. Interest in the next column, and then the ending balances in December 31st, 2024. And we ended the month of December with seven million fifty-four thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars in the local bank. The next institution, banking institution, is Regions Bank. We have a couple of custodial accounts there where we keep our bond. So, any debt that we issued during that timeframe, which is Series 21 and 22, we keep it in a custodial account. And what that means is that it's restricted so that we can only use those funds to pay for those projects that were bonded out during that time. Anytime we expend anything for a capital project, we pull from these bank accounts and reimburse ourselves, you know, because we cut the check from the general fund. And so, you'll see there that we started at twenty-one point nine million dollars. And you see several transactions there, and then the interest. And we ended in December at fourteen point one million dollars, okay? The next bank is Prosperity Bank. That is a lockbox bank where I believe it was opened a few years ago to account for any kind of EMS billing, and so it all goes in there. And so, we started with fifty-three thousand, deposits and withdrawals of sixteen thousand, and we ended at sixty-nine thousand seven forty-one. The next page will show your investment pools. And so, the first pool is Logic, and that's what it's called. And you'll see all of the different accounts and the names of the accounts that are kept in that investment pool. We started off with five million four hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, and we ended in December with five million four hundred and seventy-five thousand seven forty-four. The next investment pool that the city has funds in is TechStar, very similar to Logic. And you can see all of the different accounts there. Started off with a total of sixteen million six fifty-eight nine fifty-seven and ended December with sixteen million eight fifty-seven seven fifty-four. And the total holdings for the first quarter for the city of Wilmer is forty-three million five sixty-four three ninety-two. This is provided to council for transparency purposes so that you know where all of the investments are being kept and balances on a quarterly basis. Next page, you will see a small little chart where you can see just the different little bars there of the interest rate that the different institutions paid to the city of Wilmer. At the very end of the presentation, I will go into how I compare the interest that is being earned by the city investment, and I compare it to a 26-week T-bill and all of their rates and see how we're doing against that T-bill. It is a really good benchmark to use. Most cities use this benchmark of the 26 Treasury Bill. The next page, you'll see a portfolio summary management report that is required by the Public Funds Investment Act in the state of Texas. We have to provide this to you. The beginning book value is just what I went over. The fifty million two hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars is the portfolio at the beginning of the quarter. The ending book value is forty-three million five hundred and sixty-four thousand three ninety-one and sixty-five cents. Now, there's also a market value. With the city of Wilmer, we don't have those types of investments such as, you know, some cities diversify because they have such an immense portfolio. They go out and buy, you know, different kinds of investment instruments and so forth. And so, their market value and book value, sometimes it varies depending on the market. But for us, it's very simple. It's just the bank and the investment pools, which is really nice. You don't want to delve into that where you have all these fluctuating variables in the, in the market, like the stock market and things of that nature. So, what's the weighted average maturity at the ending period date? It's one day, which basically means if we go to the bank or Logic and we say we want to take out four million dollars because we're going to pay for this or we're going to transfer it for that, they have to give it to us in one day. Change in market value is mainly just deposits and withdrawals during the period. Okay, so here's where the average yield to maturity for quarter for the city of Wilmer is four point four-three-nine percent. Average yield to maturity for a six-month T-bill for the same timeframe, I found was four point four-one-nine percent. So, the city of Wilmer is earning just a little bit more than the 26-week T-bill. So, that's good. Any questions so far on the first quarter? Second quarter. So, we're catching up. January 1st to March 31st, 2025, which will coincide with the financials that I just went over. So, we start off January 1st, and you see with CSB, we had about seven million dollars. And then we ended in March with fourteen point nine million, almost fifteen million dollars there. Regions custodial account, fourteen million one oh six nine oh five. And we did some transfers because we have a lot of projects going on. Ten point two-eight-one million dollars was the ending balance there. Prosperity Bank is just a very simple account, like I said before, lockbox. We ended with seventy-four thousand seven sixty-seven. You'll see the deposits there are five thousand twenty-six, or those deposits made by those insurance companies. Next page will go into Logic, investment pool. You can see that we started off with five million four seventy-five seven forty-four, and we ended with three million thirty-two eight forty-one. TechStar. January 1st, we had sixteen point eight million, and at the end of the quarter, we had right around seventeen million. Total holdings for the quarter at the end of March 31st were forty-five million three hundred and eighty thousand eight thirteen. You'll see the graph they're populating now for the second quarter. You see the little bar graph so that you can see kind of how we're doing as far as interest rates and investment earnings. And then the last page will show you again the portfolio summary management report. The beginning book value, as I mentioned before, forty-three point six million dollars. Ending book value, forty-five point four million dollars. Change in market value, about one point eight million. And average yield to maturity for this quarter was four point one zero two percent. The T-bill earned four point two-nine-one percent, just slightly higher than us. And it will fluctuate every, every quarter. Sometimes we'd be more than them, sometimes it'll be, will be a little bit less than them. All in all, it, it's a very strong portfolio. I think that it has been managed very well. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. No?
Any questions?
Thank you so much for. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh.
Okay. May I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the first and the second quarter investment reports as. as presented.
May I get a second?
I'll second it.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 It's five to zero, it passes. Okay, Miss Mayor.
Executive session. In accordance with Texas Governmental Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, the city council will now recess into executive session, closing the meeting to discuss the following. 14A, pursuant to Section 551.071-1 of the Texas Government Code, to seek legal advice from the attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation regarding a landowner, Conny D. Sanford, who owns approximately 60.285 acres tract of real property in Dallas County, Texas. 14B, pursuant of Section 551.087 of the Texas Governmental Code, to seek legal consultation with the city attorney on a matter of which duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Dismissed or Enrolling Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter two with incentive agreement by and between the city and project echo. 14C, pursuant to Section 551.071-2 of the Texas Government Code, to seek legal advice regarding the current fiscal year position analysis, budget items, and salaries of employees. 14D, pursuant to Section 551.074A-1 of the Texas Governmental Code, to deliver the appointment employee, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to a two-wit city administrator.
At this time, we are recessing our council meeting at 10:23 and go to executive session.